Four thirty, a meeting will come to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Here. George, can I get you to pray for us?
By your heads, please. Uh, most gracious heavenly father, we just uh come to you today to thank you for all our blessings. We also thank you, Father, for the protection that you afford us over the days, and we ask special protection for our armed forces, men and women overseas and at home, also for our first responders, Father. We also want to thank you for the rain that has been coming and helping out our crops. And by the way that I hear, crops are looking really good, so we pray for a good summer and a good harvest. We ask, Father, that you be with us tonight for our deliberation, that we do things pleasing for the folks of Grasset County. Versus name we pray, amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge.
By the United States of America and into the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions from the agenda? If not, looking for a motion to.
Move some.
Moved by George, supported by Steve. Do approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Derek. We follow comment.
Now, that's for you. Thank you. I will give away mine, but actually, would you let us know, yes, please? I have to do this.
If you want to follow the comment.
Okay, perfect, okay. Um, I, I actually wrote up my notes and I'm just gonna read them so I can stay on track and get done in the right timing, so.
You're good.
First, I want to acknowledge the heartfelt concerns raised in the letter that you received from Ms. Roder. I fully understand that when someone experiences something traumatic, especially something unfamiliar like battery storage, it leaves lasting impression, leaves a lasting impression. Public safety should always be our starting point in any discussion. That said, it's also important to distinguish what happened at Moss Landing from the systems being proposed here in Grasset County. I know there's nothing proposed right now, but systems that would be proposed. Moss Landing was a repurposed warehouse, not a purpose-built facility. It had no thermal barriers, and the sprinkler system actually made things worse by spreading water onto energized batteries. It's the equivalent of storing fireworks in a barn rather than in a secure explosive-proof vault. Technology has changed, safety has advanced. Imagine comparing a car from nineteen seventies without seatbelts and airbags to today's vehicles that are crash-tested, sensor-equipped, and built with reinforced safety zones. That's the same leap forward we've made in battery storage safety. What happened in the past does not reflect standards we use today. Modern battery energy storage systems are not housed in old buildings. They are purpose-built containers that are sealed to keep water out, so no sprinkler uh systems used, thermally isolated, so if one battery fails, it won't spread, tested under UL nine five four zero and UL nine five four zero A to ensure safety under stress. And it's also recognized by the NFPA as safe without water suppression if they meet these certifications. These aren't optional standards. They are nationally enforced through local permitting, third-party testing, and fire department reviews, and they apply to all developers, not just one. Every responsible developer must comply with, and there's the whole list, and it's in one of the documents that I provided for you guys. Um, so I just wanted to clarify the misinformation. While Mrs. Roder's letter was deeply personal, several of the statements made are not supported by verified data. There is no evidence from the EPA, CDC, or NIOSH showing that battery storage events like Moss Landing result in long-term community health issues, toxic fallout, or airborne nanoparticles affecting miles of homes. We must be careful to make decisions based on science, not fear. The last thing that I'll say is, you know, honestly, it's why the ordinance that you're drafting is so important. If done right, it ensures that only certified, independently-tested, and safe energy storage systems are allowed to operate. You can stay in control of siting, setbacks, and enforcement, and do so with facts on your side. We all want the same thing, a safe, transparent, and community-aligned process. Today's systems allow us to deliver that. Final thought versus between local control and state control. We, we want to be very clear about the direction things could go. If you choose to make the ordinance more restrictive than what the planning commission already proposed, you will likely be forcing developers to submit their application to the MPSC. When local ordinances are unworkable, developers must go through the state process. And under state siting, you no longer set the rules. The state guidelines would allow fifty-five DVA sound limit at the dwelling, energy storage units as close as fifty feet from the property line, and decommissioning that includes salvage value. That's not what anyone here wants. By working together, by keeping the planning commission's version, and avoiding extreme restrictions, you ensure that Grasset County stays in the driver's seat. We don't want to give up local control. I'm a big proponent of staying local. We just want to help in however we can to make that happen.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
So you're the company out in California, they're standing behind all the cost, the hospital costs, the cost of the damage that it did out there, and removing people to a different area. Did they stand behind that?
I, I don't know, because we're not that company. Um, I can look at.
Will your company stand behind it?
Oh, yeah, we, we have that in our agreement, and it's within our, um, if something did happen, right? Then that's DT's responsibility, and that's a part of conditions of our SUP application. The county is no responsibility for any of that.
Of course, we wouldn't, but the company, the battery company should stand behind one hundred percent for maybe fifty years or a hundred years.
Hundred percent agree, but that's.
In writing.
Yes, yes, and that's a condition of our application, no different than our solar or our wind projects that we do as well.
Okay.
Um, and then the information that I provided does include, um, I did reach out to Tom Sutton about this letter that I saw online a couple of days ago. Um, I reached out to him, he wasn't able to respond, but I did send the email that he sent me with the third parties that did all the studies on the information that I just spoke to, so that's all in the packet that I gave. Yes.
I have a question on the letter that is addressed from you to us, or the planning commission that we have from June twelfth. Um, basically saying that what you just said, that either we have, we either go with what the planning commission, and I'm not sure, because no one's been able to actually tell me where their setback things came from, because I've done a ton of research on this. I've spent a lot of hours of my own time researching this stuff. And so I hear that, you know, all of our setbacks are extreme by what I'm reading in here, and it can't be done. But, um, and there's a forty-acre parcel, note how much could be used in an eighty-acre parcel, but right next to your property where your transmission company is gonna have, or transmits the power up into there, there's a hundred and fifty-nine acre parcel, nobody bothered to calculate how much that is, that's already got a windmill on it. There's one within a half a mile that's got a hundred and sixty acres. There's, uh, and all these people already participate in the, um, uh, wind and solar anyhow, so I'm just curious as to um, how small of a piece of property do we want to put this thing up?
So, and I did.
I, I do not agree with putting these things a hundred feet away from the road. Not concerned about waterways, because before we know that there's a problem, it's gonna be in Lake Michigan or Lake Huron. It's, that's how this is gonna work. It's how it works at every industrial site that has an issue. You're not gonna know. It's the same thing. It says tiles running underneath, thirty-two inches underneath the ground. I farm. I know exactly how stuff gets into farm tiles, and then it ends up in a ditch, and the ditch ends up in the river, and the river ends up, and then somebody goes, oh, there's a sheen. Well, okay, so how do we, why would you not want to cut off or reroute farm tiles? Why would we not want to do that? That, to me, makes, it makes this right out of the equation, whatever getting in there. But that's stipulated in one of these things that we can't do that, or we shouldn't have to do that. It makes no sense. We went to it and to a summit just a few days ago, well, a month, or half a month ago now, where they talked about, so I talked to the people about sound ordinance. You know what they're doing in some of these? They had pictures of them there. After these busses have been built, now they're going in, and like you see along the expressway, they're building cement barriers all the way around them, so people don't have to hear them, so it projects the sound that way, not that way. I don't want that, but if we have proper setbacks, and we put three rows of proper vegetation, not somebody's thought, oh, we're gonna grow arbovita and rock-hard clay. It's not a native species. Nobody bothers to mess the soils and figure out what kind of soils we have, that this stuff will even grow. It, to me, it's like, let's work together. I understand. We have four hundred and seventeen wind turbines, and we have three, is it three? We're gonna have three by the end of the summer of these solar farms. I get it. This is part of the process. Let's work together on this thing and not have it be one lady's way or the highway. That's totally what it feels like, though, is either this way, or we're, we're just gonna go with the state's thing, and that doesn't sit well with me.
So I, I will need to get some individuals to talk through, because I'm not an expert on all the questions that you just asked, and I would love to get some of those, those questions answered for you. So I will work on getting some additional feedback for you on the, on the, on the piece about rerouting drain tile, rerouting the drain tile.
Hmm.
Um.
Lord knows when they put all the rest of this stuff in, they screwed up every farm they were on.
And, yeah.
And we're still fixing it.
So.
Ask anybody that'll take it. Still.
We'll say that if we, if you go to where DTE built the latest wind project in, um, in that township, that that would be, you would find different, different responses to that. We didn't build the wind projects, we purchased the wind projects in Grasset County.
Again.
We've blessed, we've, other people's.
Lots of people were.
Back in here on county day, so hundred percent, I don't agree, I don't disagree with you, because when I was out signing land for solar, I got to hear all the complaints of the tile that wasn't fixed correctly, and DTE went back in, even though we were not under contract to have it, we went back in and we fixed anybody that had any issue with that, even if they weren't a supporter of solar. Um, that being said, in terms of the setbacks, um, the, if you look in, to your point, in the packet that I gave you today, there is the setback of on an eighty acre and a sixty, and a forty acre. Um, perfect example of the one that we're looking at in Pine River Township. It's a hundred and sixty acres. We're looking at the south twenty acres of it. Okay, well, that, if we want to do the south twenty acres of it to keep more farmland, farmland, and not, you know, put it in the center of that hundred and sixty acres, um, where you can't necessarily use the outside of it, um, we would be hundred, I, I forget what Pine River setback is, but if that, if that does go through, and if we do continue down that, we're in evaluation phase right now, then it would be a hundred and fifty feet, if I'm not mistaken, from the different property lines. In, in terms of the safety component, with the new technology, and that is where, were you here when, um, when, I think Tom Sutton was here, when he presented?
No, I couldn't, I, I was with one of my kids, I think.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, but that was, and that was a lot of what he talked about, and how he touched on the different, the way that batteries are developed today, and how.
I've read they're changing every day. Before you're done talking, they're gonna have something better than they had yesterday. I get it.
So, so from that perspective, though, it's, it's, you know, if you, if you want to look at further setbacks, right? I mean, if we found the exact perfect parcel, or if a developer, forget DTE for a moment, because I don't have anything pending for anything in a Grasset County township that's owned by the township right now. So if we, if we want to look and find the exact perfect parcel that fits the criteria, if it is a hundred and eighty, a hundred and sixty acre parcel, and that landowner is willing to let us use that one hundred and sixty acre parcel, then, then we could do further setbacks. That's in the perfect world, right? And so if we look at, um, the eighty acre for the setbacks, which equates to three point nine seven acres left over, if you do six hundred setback all the way around, then you're left over with four acres, and you really need between twelve and twenty acres, depending on the size.
Why don't we come to a, a a compromise and not go whoop all the way back? No, DT doesn't want to be over on this side of the fence. I don't necessarily want to be on this side. For thirty years of my life, I was the guy who showed up with this stuff first, okay? And when things go boom and things go bad, I don't care much technology, I don't care. We don't know what they're gonna do. We don't know, and safety systems fail, that's why you, that's why the news media has things on it all the time, because something failed and went wrong. DT's had things fail and go wrong. Shig County's had things fail and go wrong. It happens. Okay, that, we can't plan for all of those. I get it. But I don't want one of his young deputies flying in the door, or flying into the driveway, and a fire truck's coming behind him, so what's the police officer gonna do?
Hundred percent.
He's gonna pull us the front door or his windshield right up there. And then it goes kaboom, and now he's either maimed or dead.
Well, we do.
He ain't gonna come to the funeral. They ain't gonna care. You know what I mean? We, the people, are the ones who are gonna have to deal with it. You might, but you know what I mean? We're the ones that have to deal with that tragedy in our, in our community. That's where, I'm not saying six hundred, that is a number that I came up with from lots of other places used, even farther south, okay? But to me, let's come to something where we can make your twelve to fifteen acres be within nice enough setback around it that people can, um, feel some form of safety with it.
And, and I completely hear you on that. I'm, I don't, and I don't disagree with you on that. I think the challenge that you have is, you're also not looking at just DTE as a developer, right?
We're looking at all, I mean.
You're looking, and so the, the dilemma that is there right now before you guys is that, depending on what you put in place, some developers aren't necessarily gonna come to the table and say, hey, here's the parcel we found, here's what we can make work. They're just gonna submit to this, to the state, right? So when they call you, there's.
When it goes horribly wrong, it's the state of Michigan's baby, not Grasset County.
I agree with you on that.
Whole thing that I fall back on is, that's the state's deal.
Yeah, but if it.
They came up with garbage, which the state is known to do, you can put me on Steve Sapsy, four forty-six, on July first. I've worked in government my whole life. They've come up with some, and continue to do it on a day-to-day basis. So it's where I'm like, if they want, if you want to go on that, go on, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It isn't gonna have Steve Sapsy's stamp, Revo, I can assure you of that.
And one of the things that is important to note is then you're still, but you're still looking then at fifty-foot setbacks and fifty-five sound limits at dwellings versus versus the other, so.
And the state of Michigan can pay to put the cement wall around it.
Well, they, they, yes, they, they.
That's what happens. That's, they had pictures of them in other states where, oh, we're gonna be able to meet this standard, well, they haven't, and then all of a sudden, now you're building one of them big concrete walls that you see along the edges of the highway, the way around those things.
And that is part of sometimes the mitigation strategy, right? If, if there's a sound limit to be met, and that can't be met, then that is one of the mitigation strategies that can, that can take.
Hmm.
Um, so I, I agree, Steve. I mean, we, I see a lot of it.
I do, I mean, I respect you. I mean, you have a job to do, I have a job to do. And I firmly believe, this county, we have been, there aren't very many counties in the country who have stepped up to the plate, like Grasset County, Michigan, okay? Long before I was on this board, you know, we're getting close to twenty years of having wind turbines here now. And now we've got, gonna be three solar fields, okay? This is an integral part of the system. I respect that. All I want is just like our wind turbines. They didn't build them next to the road. You had to be one and a half times the fall distance, correct?
Sure.
Everybody seemingly figured out how to farm around them. Their GPS, they go out there on their thing, and they go beep, and they drive the other corner, beep, and they drive the other corner, beep, and they drive the other corner, beep, and guess what? They plant around them, they spray around them, they farm around them all the time. This thing could sit right in the middle of eighty acres, and if fifteen acres is in the corner, or fifteen acres is in the center of it, you can farm around it.
You can't in eighty acres.
Well, we have six hundred feet setbacks, it's not changed that very much, and all of a sudden, voila, I've done the math, I know how far you gotta have for setbacks.
And I've seen.
I know, you use the six hundreds. I, I agree, I agree, but I needed a number that I came up with from my research and the planning commission. I'm not one hundred percent clear, other than what other people had used in theirs locally, but that, we have other townships in our county that have more strict, we're the county. I look at it that way. We should have the ideal model ordinance. Not a push the easy button from Staples and just copy what the neighbors have. We need to clearly think, talk to people, talk to the developers, come up with what can, where, where do we have to be at? An eighty is a very logical, there's bazillions of them in this county, you know what I mean? And if you take eighties and you go to where your thing is in New York, or North Star Township, it definitely adds to your options. I love a lot more.
Right, but if it's eighty acres, with, and I realize you're saying you're looking at maybe six hundred's not the ideal number, and that makes sense. The other thing that I, the only other thing that I'll say, and again, this is, you can make sure, we can, I can get you some of the answers that you asked about earlier to see what that looks like and how that impacts anything, but the one thing that I will say is, if you talk to Kevin Beeson in Pine River Township, I'm talking about solar, not battery right now, if you talk to him about their, their landscape screening plan, he wishes that they would have totally given themselves away to modify that, because he would totally do it different, because he didn't know what he didn't know, as he would say. Um, and so now we, we, we have to put screening based on the ordinance in spots that he believes, and I, I think, I, I don't think I'm out of turn speaking this, because he has said it to me, that we have to put, we're putting, we're replanting dead trees, which we will continue to do, that we're replanting dead trees in spots that don't make any sense because of the way the ordinance is written. Which is why, if you look at their next ordinance for best, they actually stake what they want for it, but then they also give the planning commission flexibility to do what makes sense.
Hmm.
Um, and, and so that's just something to.
That's why I thought up, the planning commission needs to have wording in there that we actually study the soils, because Toledo Clay in Ashley, Michigan is a totally different soil.
Hundred percent.
And, and then you have down there. You're never gonna get the trees to grow, right? What you planted around down there in, in Washington Township, they're never gonna grow, right? Ain't number one, you got so damn many deer down there, they're gonna eat them off at a browse line, it's, it's horrible. It ain't never gonna, ever, ever, ever.
We don't disagree, and we do that.
That's where I talked to the guy who came and spoke at this thing, who you know, it's from Morningstar, he was at Washington Township, and Scott Wiley?
Yes.
And you use multiple species, things that are able to grow in the soil that you're actually trying to grow them in, and you use multitudes of, that's why I'm a proponent of the three rows. I know you're not. I am, simply because when you do that, now you have things that have foliage all year long, they're appeasing to the eye, they do what you want them to actually do, deaden the sound, make it so that nobody, and if it's sitting out far enough away from a field, in the middle of a field, probably nobody's gonna see it anyhow, but those are some of the things that you have to be willing to work on, and that.
And, and Steve, I hear you on that. The problem that you're gonna have, and I don't mean this, and I don't mean this disrespectfully all, when, depending on what you put in the ordinance, will send people directly to the state. I, DT has no desire to go to state siting, you know that, we.
You guys work with, you work with the locals all the time.
And that is, and we are continuing to do that. We are continuing to do that route. At the end of the day, if we can't, right, based on an ordinance, if it doesn't work for whatever reason, and, you know, then DT might have to, and I'm not saying DT will go to the state, I'm saying if for some reason we can't, and we have to go to the state, we, we don't want to do that. Other developers will likely not be as, it costs more money to plant the trees, right? The reason, but, so it costs more money to plant the trees, and it costs more money to do it in the center of the project, and I guarantee you, I mean, cost is a factor in all of this, right? That being said, we also know it costs more money to go to the state to submit your application, so there's give and take, so the state doesn't, doesn't require any landscape screening.
We have to worry about, I can't put on a pair of rose-colored glasses that have dollar signs on them, because that's how most people look at this. They're all worried about how much tax, 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 and how much is DTE gonna give the township or whatever. That's all part of the equation, but young lady sitting over here in pink, who, I don't even know your name, but I know what township you're from, and I know your feelings on the best things. These are the people that have to live in Grasset County. These are the people who have to, um, I don't know if she has children or grandchildren, have children that I'm pretty confident are gonna live in Grasset County for the rest of their life. I pray to God I will be blessed with grandchildren, will be raised in Grasset County. If I'm blessed with grandkids, they'll be the sixth generation to walk around on my family farm. I'm proud of that.
Absolutely, you should be.
And I don't want that to change, and I sure as hell don't want to be the guy who sat in one of these five seats who did something to affect the value and the safety of our property in Grasset County. Okay, that is my number one concern. I can put on the rose-colored glasses and all I see is a dollar sign. I refuse to do it, because there's a hell of a lot more to this equation than tax dollars, which a lot of people, it's, oh, I want a piece of that tax money. Okay, that's great. Make sure you put that in your will if something goes wrong with these, so that your family knows you were a part of it all for the dollar signs. There's more to this equation than the dollar signs. You need them, the electrical grid system needs them. I respect that. It's part of the process. Let's work together to come up with something that is feasible for all involved, and the people who live in this county, if something goes wrong, if something goes wrong, and it can, the way we're building, the number of these things we're building, and what have you, it, it's inevitable, there's gonna be fires and, and things that are gonna happen. It's gonna happen. Trust me, it's gonna happen. It, it, there's gonna be something. They have all these wonderful fire suppression systems. I, I'm impressed with all the technology, I am. But I also realize things go wrong. Things fail, things don't work right. There's a weld that was not, didn't seal it right, or whatever, and oxygen got introduced, or it's pouring rain, and there's a spot that was thin and water drips in. Murphy shows them, okay? And when that happens, and bad things happen, how are we controlling what happens to the soils of Grasset County? The waters of Grasset County, Michigan, our Great Lakes, that's what I'm concerned about. And that's where I think we have to go about this with a open mind and not just looking at it from one full. I'm tired of people going, oh, because I don't want, I, I understand, you guys have to make money, that's what you're, your business. I've, I've done a ton of reading about DTE and all kinds of things as well, so.
I want to also bring up something else, too. I live in St. Louis, and over fifty years ago, there was a chemical spill into one of the lakes.
How about?
Fifty years later, we're still dealing with it. It hasn't gotten any better. It's still the same. And so whatever happens could go on for more than fifty years. And what you're saying is if we don't vote for this, it'll go to the state, and the state will do less. What's that tell us? That they don't care? They would, it seems like whatever, that Steve has done a lot of work on this, so whatever he has looked at is to make it safe. And even then, it might not be safe. And what you're saying is if we don't vote for this, well, the, the state will vote, they'll put in something there, and it's gonna be a whole lot less than what we come up with. I don't really think so. I've been doing a research of my own on this for the last thirteen years. And I also know that a lot of these companies are not owned by the companies, they're owned by China. And in fact, there is a company right here in Ithaca that's owned completely, the whole thing is owned by China, and I got that in writing. And so I'm still working on it, but I'm at the end of the, another couple of months here, and I'm gonna be done, and I'm gonna take and go public with it. And so I'm just telling you, go ahead, because when I come public, it's how much China owns in these wind turbines is quite a few.
Thank you, Teresa. It's, uh, three minutes of public comment was not supposed to turn into a half an hour of public.
I wanted to be sure we gave time for, you know, everybody to get settled in.
Works for you.
Detroit Edison. And I wanted Gordon to be here, so. Now he's here.
Do you work?
I contract with DTE directly.
Detroit Edison.
Detroit Edison, yeah.
What?
DTE.
Detroit Edison.
Detroit Edison, DTE.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think you do a good job.
Thank you for, for, I mean, I, I renew Moss Landing was building a this, this is good, because it goes helps. So I don't know if it's not.
Okay, moving on.
You guys.
Consideration of the consent calendar.
Consider. Honor.
Certainly.
Order.
Public comment. Public now.
Or did anybody else want to do a public comment? Okay. Motion by Tim, supported by who for?
It was motion by Bailey.
Oh.
Gay was the support.
Okay.
Oh.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Administrators report.
All right. Um, pretty quiet in a couple of weeks. I would note, though, um, I know the county is engaged in some lighting improvement and, uh, in the district court and the connector building for some lighting and such, and they received a twelve thousand dollar rebate. So, you know, sometimes you hear about those things, you always hear about the money coming back.
It really did work, they.
Yeah. I would know, the work continues on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, several departments. Several departments have uh, returned their proposed budgets, yet many are outstanding, they're due the end of the week, and uh, we're pushing along on that. Um, I also wanted to note, we had a county employee named Melinda Fowler, retired.
Fifty-three years.
He was working here for fifty-three years. He was working in the prosecutor's office or last stop, but that was rather noteworthy, I thought I should mention that.
How many years was it?
Fifty-three.
Wow.
That's gotta be the longest.
They put a happy retirement fifty-three year thing out in the yard, we don't usually do that.
Yeah.
The picture.
Pictures, yep, yep.
It was happening around here yesterday. And uh, I would just quickly note that I met with EquraSure, the uh, brokerage that works with us on our health insurance, Mississippi Forty-four North, and just had a general overview of the market, and it was anticipated the rates are gonna go up and we're gonna have, they were still pursuing some of the bids from different carriers, and we should hear back from them probably within a week or so, and then try to get the committee opened up with the employee group.
Do you have any preliminary numbers at all, or?
It's gonna be significant.
Yeah, that's, I figured what you said.
Health insurance. Yeah, so anyways, that's on the horizon here, and certainly gonna be a little bit of a challenge, but anyway, they're just gonna foreshadow that, and that would wrap up my report.
Okay, George, do you have any?
Um, went to Breckenridge, had the calendar up, and I, what do I? It was uh, the twenty, the twenty-third, went to Breckenridge for their meeting. Um, their fire hall, new fire hall is coming along quite nicely. They are repainting the inside and outside of their water tower, which poses another problem, because they only have one water tower. So that means their ports have to prompt a certain pressure continually. So that, if you were a mayor of a community, you understand, there's a lot of parts and pieces that make it work. And so, the uh, village managers on pins and needles to really get that thing done, because you can't, the pressure can drop or go over very much, and it screws the whole system up. They also had a boring company put through, bore, or through one of their main sewer lines, messed that all up, so they've had a last, their last month has been a, a whole thing of covering problems. But uh, they're doing okay, they've got a good, a good manager over there, Jeff Obestrenner is one of the top managers in the county. He does a good job, he and the staff over there, Bridget, they do a good job, so. Be confident, they'll get it fixed. We also had a health department meeting, talked a lot about ticks. And learn more about ticks than I ever care to know about ticks. Not a lot you can do about ticks, just be aware of them and be able to remove them. That's about it. Uh, and of course, they have products on the market that you can use on yourself if you're gonna be out in a wooded area or wherever. And some people, if you work on the farm, put it on, because you're gonna be around. Just use it, so. And and that's basically into my report.
Um, on uh, June nineteenth, I I went to Frankenmuth for an energy meeting. Uh, we listened to various engineers from various areas about green energy. No questions were allowed, security was there, the chicken dinner was good, it was at the, preparing it. And uh, June twenty-fifth, I went to Gracia Collaborative Council in the Wilcox Room in the hospital. Uh, Riley Justice gave a talk on opening a bookstore in Mount Pleasant, and I guess at the time, there wasn't really any bookstore stores in Mount Pleasant, man, it was like two thousand fifty. Uh, and he talked about getting uh, books in the uh, hands of of children. Uh, and then a roundtable discussion ensued with people uh, talking about their social programs, and they work with vulnerable people, and uh, many were worried about future funds. And that's it.
Well, I uh, basically played hooky the last two weeks, because my uh, son-in-law and grandson were here from Germany. I did uh, was in the sheriff's golf outing, sports a good cause to uh, help for these youth group.
Yep.
And before the darn sheriff says it, I did finish last, so.
You finished?
Yep, I finished.
Proud of that.
That's all I have, Jen.
Okay, on the nineteenth, I also went to the conference in Frankenmuth. Um, they had nine speakers, it was well presented, very interesting, a lot of subjects that they covered. And um, on the, that was on the nineteenth. On the tenth, I went to Bethany Township for a meeting, and on the seventeenth, on the, I say the seventeenth and the third, I went to City of St. Louis meetings, they're the same nights as ours here. And then on the twenty-third, I went to Michigan Works. I'm on that board, I meant to bring the paperwork, I would bring that and give it to our clerk to put in our next uh, meeting, there was a, a lot of information in there, I don't think you'll want all of it, so I'll kind of mark the things that you might be interested in looking at. And so other than that, that's pretty much my, my month.
Steve? Um, on the eighteenth, I went to the Parks and Recreation Meeting. Um, parks are doing well, they're um, obviously starting to get used, a lot more kids are out of school and with the heat, um, they've been used quite a bit, it'll be interesting to hear about water quality when we get to uh, this next meeting, being that we had all this heat, but um, the company that monitors them has been keeping an eye on them and gave them the authority to be able to treat them when needed to be treated, they were appreciative of that. Um, John mentioned he has been working with Ryan on the budget process, which is new to him, so, I mean, he was new to the anyhow, and and then the budget process is new for him. On the eighteen or nineteenth, I went over to uh, the Alternative Energy Summit in Frankenmuth. That was put on by the Saginaw and Bay Economic Development. It was very informative, listened to all the speakers, spoke with a few of them um, at breaks and afterwards, um, because I had questions I wanted to have answered, and the only way you can do that is to stand in line and talk to them afterwards, because I won't let you ask any, I tried. Um, twenty-fifth, had the health department, um, we did learn about ticks. Um, went over, and interesting, whether or not we're gonna hear anything new on the septic, as of right now, nothing has been, um, you remember last year, George and I, I think, talked every single month? Yeah, um, but so far, there hasn't been any new legislation unless something's changed in the last couple weeks um, about that. Um, and on the twenty-third, Monday, the twenty-third, I did not go to Fulton, it was hot as blazes, and I totally forgot, and come to find out, it was the shortest meeting I think they've ever had, they were done in less than half an hour, because I, I always follow up if I miss one of them, and uh, and he told me, well, you're taking you longer to drive here and drive back home than what? That one lasted, so they didn't have a long meeting. That's it for my report.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Consideration of new business. Liz.
Hi, so, good evening again. So I'm here today, not as the health officer, I'm here because I'm representing the um, opioid, Gracia County Opioid Advisory Steering Camp Committee. And as you remembered, you charged me with bringing a group together to look at how we could distribute the opioid dollars that came into the county. Um, this is money that's available for the next eighteen years, so we agreed that we would be able to spend what was um, available per year, so we're now looking at twenty-five and twenty-six to give a head start to those who are um, being recommended. So the money we were asking for is for seventeen months, so that would take us through to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And then we would start the process again to be back on the yearly, yearly um, way. Okay, so the recommendation is that uh, we do award the um, allocation, um, as as placed in your documents, the allocation to four agencies, these agencies are rooted here in Gracia County. They serve Gracia County and the community, and they provide the services which would meet either prevention, treatment, recovery, education, or harm reduction. So um, there was five applications, and we are recommending four, and we did reduce the dollar amount of two of them so that it fitted, it fits the budget, it fits the budget that we were um, looking at, which was a hundred and twenty thousand a year plus the retro for the additional five years for twenty twenty-five. So um, my recommendation is that, um, or the recommendation on behalf of the Gracia County Opioid Advisory Steering Committee is that the opioid settlement dollars will be awarded to the recipients listed, and that um, the proposal did meet the strategy that the group put together, and also it meets the um, National Opioid Settlement um, information that was provided, which is supported by Johns Hopkins Public Health and what we've been using, and also what Michigan Association of Counties has been guiding Michigan to use.
I hear a motion to who's supported that the county supports the opioid committee's recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, thanks, see you next time.
Is there any additional board comments or comment, comments to the board? If that's it, need a consideration to go into closed session. But George, supported by Steve, to go into closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay.